Good morning, it's nine o'clock. We are going to begin the Douglas County Board of Commissioner meeting. I'd like everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, for those that may need it, there is an automatic external defibrillator in the back of the legislative chambers. And let me note and ask everybody to please silence, mute, or turn off your cellphones for the meeting. With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting, held Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, and Monday, October 15th, 2018. Item B is called for meeting and said Tuesday, October 30th, 2018, as a date for hearing on a certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
Motion by Commissioner Duda.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Just want to note that the viewers at home will not be able to see the commissioners' votes appear on the TV screen. All, motion passes, all commissioners present voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. We have items, well, first, can I ask for the approval of items E through H, and I'll come back to D and explain. Please.
Mike Goodwillie, Douglas County Assessor, District Office. I want to touch base on item E for a moment, if I could. It is a late filed application on behalf of the Iglesia Cristiana Discipulos de Cristo. I probably am bungling that. They filed well after the June 30 deadline, and so we denied them as the statute requires us to do. Subsequently, I have received a letter on behalf of Pastor Daniel Zapata, who is the pastor of that church, that I'd like to read in the record. He doesn't speak English very well. To the Board of Equalization, Douglas County, Nebraska, my name is Daniel Zapata, and I am the pastor of Iglesia Discipulos, located at 4401 South 23rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am requesting on behalf of my church that you allow us a tax exemption for tax year 2018, even though we did not file a Form 451A, statement of reaffirmation of tax exemption until September 22, 2018. The church property was owned by the Regional Office of the Disciples of Christ denomination. The Regional Office is referred to as Christian Church. The Regional Office originally submitted the filings requesting a tax exemption in past years. The address of the Regional Office is 237 South 70th Street, Suite 221, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68510. In late 2016, the property was transferred via quitclaim deed from the Regional Office in Lincoln to the Iglesia. However, it appears that the notices from the county assessor regarding the need to refile for tax exempt status continued to be sent to the Regional Office in Lincoln. I believe a notice was sent to the Regional Office in 2017 as a reminder that the Iglesia did need to file a Form 451A for 2018, but as far as I am aware, we did not receive this notice from the Regional Office. It was not until after the June 30, 2018 deadline that our church accountant received from the Regional Office the county assessor's notice of the deed to file for the 2018 exemption. I fully understand that under Nebraska law, our church should have filed Form 451A before the June 30, 2018 deadline, and really should have filed this form before December 31st, 2017. Excuse me. In our case, we continue, I also underst, excuse me, in our case, we continue to be a small Hispanic church with 80 to 100 regular attendees made up almost exclusively of immigrant families from Central America. If we are not given tax exempt status for 2018, this will result in a serious financial hardship on our congregation as we do not hold funds in reserve, and most of our bills are paid from Sunday tithes and offerings. This serious oversight and error will not happen again. I've already spoken with the accountant from our church, who stated she will file Form 50, the Form 451A for the 2019 tax year in November of this year, to ensure we meet the December 31 deadline. And as pastor of the church, I will ensure that the accountant files this form by personally calling the county assessor's office before December 31st, 2018, to confirm that the form has been filed. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Pastor Daniel Zapata.
What's the will of the Board? There's a motion to grant an exemption for item E. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kraft. Mr. Clerk, you ready?
Yeah.
Please vote.
Okay. Everything is okay. Just make sure the 19 gets filed, okay?
Motion passes. Commissioner Duda voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Let's go back to item D. Item D, Mr. Goodwillie asks for this to be laid over to next week because he needs to make some-
Actually indefinitely.
Indefinitely, sorry.
There are some items that I need to do some further research on.
Okay.
Motion, motion to lay over D indefinitely by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second?
Second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
The whole thing. The whole thing. I thought it would get too confusing to say this one, but not this one, this one, but not this one.
Okay, we are ready to vote. Thank you. Motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.
Items, is there most approved item F's, items F's through H and adjourned? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Duda, please vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
For the item-
Okay, please speak now, sir, before we vote.
Good morning. Michael Hannis, I'm the owner and taxpayer of the property that the Board has, the Board of Equalization, considered a partial, a partial allowance for agricultural with green belt. And the points that I want to bring up today is, first, I want to clearly state that I appreciate what we did get, but there's still the issue that I'd be amiss if I could make it down here and I didn't bring up, which is the property should be considered as a whole 20-acre parcel and not just as something that's cut out of it. And also, when it comes to the value of the land, whether it's considered as rural residential or agricultural, there was a sale in 2017 of a nearby property down the road for $5,500 an acre, and that would be evidence of this is all the land is worth. And right now, you have mine valued in the neighborhood of an average of $8,000 or more dollars an acre, and the math on that just doesn't accurately reflect what the land in the area that I live in and farm in is worth.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, there is a motion to second. Please vote.
Mr. Chair.
I'm voting, it's not voting. Yes.
Okay. Well, over here, we have everybody, but Commissioner, but anyway, all present voted yes, motion passes.
Okay. With that, we will call the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting, held Tuesday, September 11th, 2018. What's the will of the Board?
Motion approved by Commissioner Duda.
Motion approved by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item two, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the item three, and that's the report of the Director. Mr. Myers, for the first time.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Michael Myers. I am your new Director of Corrections, and you have before you my first Board report. Before I get into the content of that report, even though this is an October-related item and this report is for the month of September, I did want to touch on the public safety bond and the phase-two construction that did kick off on time about 10 days ago. We currently have two housing units that are closed down for various improvements that are taking place. The staff did a fantastic job of proactively relocating over 70 inmates and safely redistributing them throughout the facility. That is quite a complex task when you think about security classifications, who has to be kept separate from whom, and so kudos to the staff. It was a very, a team effort involving several people on making sure that that happens safely. I'll continue to provide the Board regular updates on the construction progress as we begin this nearly two-year phase of these renovations. All right, turning your attention to enclosure number one, administrative services. Following the third month of the fiscal year, we are over budget. We are looking into the reasons for that. We believe a lot of that is attributed to the FOP contract that was approved after our budget was submitted. We're looking in, Amber Redmond is working on the math on that, and we should have a figure for that to report out and work with Joe to compensate our budget accordingly in the near future. Enclosure number two, community corrections. The Sanction Center, which is where we house individuals who have been referred for custodial sanctions, mostly from probation, but also other problem-solving courts, had fewer referrals in September, but that was also due to there was fewer of them coming to the jail period. So that actually was a good sign to see. The new pretrial release program referred 16 felonies per bond reviews. We have some limited outcome data on this. We're going to be working with the Public Defender's Office in particular on closing some communication loops so that we know what happens in court and can start track this data more effectively. We'll be circling back to that. Now that I'm into my transition for a couple of weeks here, I'm starting to think about the things that I left behind in my former job that still need to be, to be cleaned up. 24/7 sobriety program had 53 admissions. This continues to be a very busy program for us lately. We conducted 2,647 breath tests. There were 10 positive for alcohol use, 17 no-shows for alcohol testing in September, and the overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99%. To put that in perspective, that's our worst month that we've ever had in the four years of the program, and it's still a 99% compliance rate. Forty-five individuals were monitored for 1,011 days of SCRAM monitoring. We had one no-show, no tampering violations, and three alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was 99.6%. We conducted 451 saliva drug tests. 16 were positive, and there were 18 no-shows for drug testing. And we've always anticipated that the drug testing population would be a little more difficult, and we wouldn't get quite the compliance rate, just due to the severity of the addictive nature of those drugs. Thirteen drug patches, testing patches were submitted for testing, and then there were no positive results. There was one no-show for somebody who didn't return to get their patch removed. Also wanted to point out that the 24/7 program, for the first time, completed the year, the federal fiscal year, which is where we measure that on, because there is a Office of Highway Safety grant that is kind of the backup funding to cover anything that program fees don't cover. For the past couple of years, it's been close to a break-even program. For the grant year that just concluded on September 30th, we did not spend any grant dollars. It was 100% supported by participant fees and actually finished $11,000 in the black funds that are returned to the, to the county's general fund. So we're glad to see the progression of that program. Work release admitted 40 individuals during September, and those clients donated 147 hours of community service to various public and private charitable organizations. House arrest admitted 64 individuals. Twenty-three individuals were admitted to the RAP program. Corrections programs in the jail admitted 50 individuals. This is probably the closest jumping-off point on my report to tell you about something we have coming up that I think is of interest and, and a very, will be a very special day for us. Our veterans program. We will be recognizing both our staff and inmates who have served our country in the military. We will do that on the Friday before Veterans Day on the 9th. We have a very special guest who can, who will join the ceremony that day. Robert Holtz is the last surviving Tuskegee Airmen in Nebraska. He was, we had him scheduled to come a few months ago. He had a health setback and couldn't make it, but he will be present. He will go up to the vets unit in the jail. I'm very much looking forward to that. That'll, we'll get out a formal invitation to everyone, but that'll be 1:00 that afternoon. And then, following that ceremony, we'll have the recognition of our staff who have served in the military at 2:30 this afternoon, or that afternoon on the 9th. Moving on, pretrial services. Referenced 26 individuals for priority prosecution. 327 bed days were saved. 530 individuals were placed on pretrial release, and a total of 1,238 individuals were monitored over the course of the month of September on pretrial release. Turning to enclosure number three, our ACA, NCHC, and PRIA compliance. Data collection for all of those endeavors continues. The Nebraska Department of Correctional Services conducted a security audit of the jail in September. I haven't gotten a full briefing on, from Mr. Sweeney on, on the outcome of that, but I'll be doing that very soon. Also, this morning, we began our audit from ICE, so that will, I briefly met with the auditors who arrived on-site. They had a team of, I believe, about seven people who'll be looking us over for the next couple of days. So we will, I'll be spending some time with them over the course of the next couple of the days during their visit. Enclosure number four, personnel. We have a new hire class that will graduate on November 2nd. That will, the ceremony will be at 1:00 at the jail, in our training rooms. We will, again, also send out an invite for the, for any commissioners who would like to attend. The staff, both those of us who've been around a while and the new hires appreciate when there is a commissioner who's able to attend. We are also working on putting together another new hire class to follow that one. Shooting for, I believe I actually should read November 19th for a start date for training, with a fallback date of the 26th, depending on how quickly we get the interviews, background checks, and evaluations of those candidates done. Enclosure number five, population. We had 1,640 admissions during September. We released 1,538. Our high count was 1,343. Our low count was 1,249. We averaged 1,300 people per day in secure custody. We did have 286 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population increased from August. However, I'll, I do want to mention that they did remove a good chunk of people right before construction started, so in October, we've actually seen that number dip down to where we want it to be. We'll keep monitoring that closely. The ICE population decreased. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. The female population increased, and there are currently three female housing units Relating to population, we will be, we have another concept, especially during the construction, to attempt to take some of the pressure off of the jail, a concept we're calling the Transitional Discharge Center. That's been mentioned in some previous Board reports, where we'll be taking people who we normally thought might be a tad much of a risk to put in community corrections at the beginning of their sentence, but maybe for the last few days, we can safely manage them. So we're working on developing a process to assess who's gotten more stable and who we think can, can basically hold it together for up to a week, maybe, being housed with the work release population until their release date. We have some meetings with, already scheduled with county and district court judges for November to work out the details of that, and hopefully we'll have that program running, hopefully before the 1st of December. Moving to enclosure number six, medical. We conducted 1,381 in-state screenings, 492 physical and health assessments. There were 141 initial psychiatric assessments, 68 initial mental health assessments, 53 mental health infirmary placements. We had one Board of Mental Health referral to, one Board of Mental Health referral and three individuals who were referred to long-term psychiatric facility. Questions?
Peter, Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, thank you very much for your report. For the young people that are visiting, you might just mention how many people are released and how many are coming in, because it's, it's quite a change. This facility is located approximately 1 kilometer or six blocks to the south of the building that you're sitting in right now. So go ahead, our correction facility.
Absolutely. So on an annual basis, last year, we booked in just over 19,000 people. And so that's 1,600 to 1,700 people a month that come through our doors. We release almost that many people back straight into the community, probably, I don't have the exact percentage, but if I was to ballpark it, I would say probably close to 90% of the people who come into this jail walk out of this jail and rejoin our community.
And that's each month, so it is, and I don't mean to say it in the wrong way, but it almost is like a hotel facility, because you have, it isn't like the people are staying for a year or two.
Right.
They're staying for a week or three weeks or a day, whatever it might be.
We have people anywhere from a few hours, and we've had, recently, we had somebody who left after a five-year stay, so it's-
Five-year?
Yes.
That has to be one of the longest.
It is one of the, it is right up there, in the top two or three at least, so.
And Mike, you've worked there how long?
I've worked at the department for 11 years. I worked as the case manager for one of the programs for a year. I was the community corrections manager for the previous 10 prior to my appointment as Director.
So Mike's background has been very strong there, and he's been a good leader and contributed to the successes. And this Board, just in the last 30 days, selected Mike to be the new Director of our Detention Center, the correction facility. As the previous one, Mark Foxall did an excellent job, was truly a great gift to all the commissioners in this community in doing the right thing. He decided, and it is a bit of a stressful job, after I think seven years, approximately eight years of being the Director, to take on a teaching job out at the university. So he's still a contributor. So I thank you, and again, this Board really is supportive and wants to continue to do all we can to make it the best we can.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, very much.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I just want to welcome you aboard. We're looking to a long and successful tenure under your management there. You're doing a great job so far. And thanks for the update on the public safety bond. I know that's a challenge for you, doing construction in the midst of a pretty full facility, but logistically, it seems to be working out. And the first phase went on time and on budget, and it looks like the second phase is commencing the same way.
Absolutely.
You, I think, pointed out that we have an annual population of about 19,000, is that right?
Yeah, we were, last year, it was just over 19,000 bookings. That was somewhere between 13,000 and 14,000 unique individuals. There were some repeat customers.
And that's pretty much our capacity, full capacity all the time?
It's approaching it, yes.
Right. Relative to the personnel issue, I think you indicated there's a new class coming on board now, and there's a new class going into training right, right after that?
We have a class graduating November 2nd, and a class that will follow right behind them. Those officers will do two weeks of field training. Our training department will be working with them during those two weeks as they are kind of getting their on-the-job training. After that two weeks is completed, then we will be starting the very next class right behind them.
Well, that's great. You know, the two things we've been struggling with, maximum population, which you don't really have any control over that, but I think through your community corrections background, you'll be able to bring a new perspective to maybe how to deal with some of that. And staffing, particularly the understaffing resulting in mandatory overtime. This staffing upgrade that you just referenced, is that going to impact on that?
We hope so. You know, the, one of the impacts of the construction is it does take a few more staff to man those areas. We have to have staff to keep, there's tools that aren't normally in the jail. There are contractors who aren't normally in the jail, and we do have to staff those areas with additional officers to make sure that we don't run any risk of having any, any item get where they're not, where it's not supposed to be, or any person get where they're not supposed to be. So that is one complicating factor that we just know we're going to have to deal with. I do hope that, that certainly by early next year, we will be very close to our authorized strength. We have a class graduating November 2nd, and a, a class that will follow right behind them. Those officers will do two weeks of field training. Our training department will be working with them during those two weeks, as they are kind of getting their on-the-job training. After that two weeks is completed, then we will be starting the, the very next class right behind them.
Well, that's great. You know, the two things we've been struggling with, maximum population, which you don't really have any control over that, but I think through your community corrections background, you'll be able to bring a new perspective to maybe how to deal with some of that. And staffing, particularly the understaffing resulting in mandatory overtime. This staffing upgrade that you just referenced, is that going to impact on that?
We hope so. You know, the, one of the impacts of the construction is it does take a few more staff to man those areas. We have to have staff to keep, there's tools that aren't normally in the jail. There are contractors who aren't normally in the jail, and we do have to staff those areas with additional officers to make sure that we don't run any risk of having any, any item get where they're not, where it's not supposed to be, or any person get where they're not supposed to be. So that is one complicating factor that we just know we're going to have to deal with. I, I do hope that, that certainly by early next year, we will be very close to our authorized strength. One of the things that I've been emphasizing in my first two weeks, as I've been having conversations with a variety of people in different positions throughout the ranks, is staff retention. I would like to see us explore ways that we can better mentor and support our young officers. If we can improve that, that early professional development and stability of their employment, I think that will go a long way to alleviating these problems in the long term.
Well, that sounds good. I, I look forward to hearing your ideas on that, because that is, has been a continual problem. We train people, and then they go to other jurisdictions. So putting in a, an end to that would, would really help us on that staffing. I appreciate your, your report, and good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, and, and, the thought came to mind, what is your average length of stay? Do you have that?
Sure. And there's, there's a couple different ways to answer that question. The, the average length of stay overall, if you consider every booking we have, is right around three weeks. However, over 40% of our individuals get out within 72 hours. They either post a bond, or, or they're out at their initial court appearance. If you don't get out within 72 hours, then the average length of stay shoots up to, to approximately two months at that point. So we, we have a, a population that turns over very quickly, and then we have the population that's going to typically be with us for a little while.
Thank you.
Okay, so you know other questions, Mike?
All right, I have a.
Oh, Commissioner Borges.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And you did a great job on your first report.
Thank you.
You're off to a good start. So just before I start, mind to piggyback on Commissioner Kraft's question, the percentage that can't get out and wait then the two months or more, how many of those do we know, or what percentage is, are those that can't pay the bond? That's the reason they can't get out?
I can't, I don't have that number.
That's fine, just whenever, that would be a good thing to, to look at.
We'll look into that, yeah.
And then, back on the drug tests that we're doing, that we're starting, you said that's a little harder population to serve than the alcohol. So when they're testing positive, what are the, what's the drug they're testing positive for?
So we test for, I think, six substances, and I shouldn't have mentioned that, because now I'm not going to be able to rattle them all off on the top of my head, but there's a lot of methamphetamine, and marijuana are probably the leading two. We also test for opiates, cocaine, benzodiazepines. Like I said, it's a six-panel test that we administer. Most, most of the common street drugs that are, that we find in our community.
So you could list those drugs, and then give us what percentage or what number were positive for those types of drugs?
Yeah, that might be something that we might have to calculate manually. I'm not sure that the website sorts the, the, the type of drug by positive test.
Okay.
But we're not talking about numbers that, I mean, it's not thousands of them that we have to go through. You know, we have, you know, one or two positive tests per week on average, and so it's not a, it wouldn't be a huge thing to go back. We've only been doing it for a little over a year to go back and see what we can find out.
Okay. Well, that would just be interesting, especially with the conversation twofold. One, the opioid crisis that is happening, and two, we have not really felt what the other counties across the country have felt, thank goodness. But we also know that the meth is still a huge issue here, but then with the conversation about the legalization of marijuana, I would just be curious to see how many are testing positive for that as well. And then, the, when you were talking about the length of stays, or waiting period on your graph, the Board of Mental Health petitions and Lincoln Regional Center transfers, what's the average length of stay that people are now waiting to get to the Lincoln Regional Center? Do you have that off the top of your head?
I, I don't have that off the top of my head, and Captain Early, who would have that off the top of her head, is actually at the National Correctional Healthcare Conference today.
That's fine, too.
So I can find that out. I do know it's a lengthy list.
Right, right. I'm just curious, maybe we need to start tracking that length of stay specifically, and having some additional conversations about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That is it, Mike.
All right, I have a, a special presentation for the board. Officer Nicholas Stella is part of the Douglas County Department of Corrections Honor Guard. During the month of October, and leading up to the month of October, my predecessor, Amber Redmond, authorized a, a special patch, T-shirts, and embroidery to the uniforms that, the Honor Guard has been selling these to raise funds for breast cancer awareness and research. And Officer Stella, as a representative of the Honor Guard, was telling me earlier this morning that the Honor Guard sees its role more than just as a ceremonial one, but really being a leader for our department in terms of that awareness and, and leadership, to be able to have that sense of community, and, and to really build staff morale around good causes. So Officer Stella has some patches that he'll present to each of you, like the one that he is wearing on his uniform.
You want to go to the mic, Officer Stella?
For the officer, they've been waiting for the whole.
You want to go to the mic, Officer Stella?
Thank you, Officer Stella.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. The motion to adjourn, the Board of Corrections. Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
We'll call it over to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
I, here. Item one is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. What's the will of the board?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item two is consent agenda. There are 16 items on the agenda. What's the will of the board? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just have a few questions. We, we can do these now or after we have the.
Say, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for the approval.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. On item B, and I briefly spoke with the county attorney relative to this bond issue from Creighton University, and I just like some clarification from the county attorney relative to what we're actually doing here on the, on the educational facilities revenue refunding bond series 2014.
What's your specific question?
I'm sorry?
What's the question?
Yes, what does this do?
Thank you, because I, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know if there's somebody here representing Creighton maybe could address that.
My name is Jed Herblan with Q-Tech Rock. We're bond counsel for the bond issue.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Jed Herblan.
Spell it for the record.
So this is a 2014 bond issue. When it was originally issued, they were refunding bonds, so they took out bonds that essentially just financed all sorts of projects at Creighton. The sole purchaser for the bonds is Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo is in the process of updating all of its documents, and the 2014 bonds, their variable rate, so they are either, the rate is either tied to LIBOR or SIFMA. For the first three years, they were tied to SIFMA. Back in 2017, they converted that to LIBOR. Ultimately, what these amendments do, they change the definition of how to get to the interest rate for the bonds. It, it's going to, I think, save Creighton $75,000 over the long haul, so that's ultimately what they do. And since the county was the issuer, they are a signatory to the indenture, and we need to amend the indenture to do that.
Very good, thank you. I have a, a question on H, and I know that Mr. Sleder is here, and I don't know if you're going to address this later. I, I see that you're on the agenda for later today, but relative to resolution for Douglas County 911 Viper upgrade, and it was actually under Kathy Allen, but if you could just tell us quickly what Viper upgrade is, that would be good.
David Sleder, Emergency Communications Center Director, Douglas County. The Viper system is the 911 telephone system, emergency, the 911 telephone system that's in use within the region, and we administer that system for the region. So this is basically an upgrade of that, of the same system, of the software and the hardware, so that we can continue on with that, through CenturyLink.
I appreciate that. And, and I know you're in the midst, as is Corrections, of a, a build-out of, under the public safety bond. This particular item, does that fall under that, or is that separate from that?
No, this, this is separate.
Okay.
This is a normal continuation of business type of a agreement that we have for the Viper upgrades, and as part of this package, we're also going to increase our region of the Viper to include Sarpy County will be coming on. Of course, we have a, the, they'll contribute to the ongoing cost of the Viper system, but it also will allow us to have another entity, answering point in the region, that can share in the Viper's redundancy and resiliency, so that in the event that a county, or a public safety answering point experiences some kind of outage from the telephone companies' 911 lines, that another public safety answering point could assist them.
That's great. That's a new thing, right, having Sarpy?
Yeah, it's definitely a benefit, or it's a, it's a cost saving to us, Douglas County, and the region as a whole, by bringing another public safety answering point on to the, the regional Viper. And this is just an upgrade to the current system, hardware and software, to allow us to do any of the new stuffs, new things coming down, to include preparations for next generations of 911, et cetera.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I just have one more question, is on related items on J and K, and I think Diane Carlson is on this. Basically, these are changes or renewals of our long-term disability policy with Cigna. It looks like effective for a two-year period. And then a resolution approving an amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield. If you could just give us a quick overview of what those two items involve?
Sure. Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. The first item is a renewal of our long-term disability policy with Cigna. It's a fully insured plan. We've been with them for three years, and we've, after Aon looked at our claims experience and spoke to Cigna about their rates, it was determined to stay with Cigna rather than going out for another RFP, and it's an increase in premium over last year, but they've guaranteed it for two more years.
Okay. And what's the premium increase?
It's a 25% increase in premium over the 2018 year.
And is that based on claims, or how?
Yes.
That's a fairly significant increase.
It is, and it, it is based on our claims, which have increased significantly over the last year.
So when we talk about long-term disability, are they basically insuring all of our employees for long-term disability for that amount?
That's correct. Those, the employee has to be here for 90 days before they're eligible.
Right. So the county is not assuming any liability? That's all covered by the long-term disability policy?
That's correct.
Great. And then regarding the Administrative Services Agreement with Blue Cross, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Okay, so we, we've entered into a three-year arrangement with Blue Cross to provide administrative services of our county's health plan, and we're in the second year. It started in 2017, so we're in the second year of that. The original contract was just for one year, or at least parts of the, of the agreement spoke about issues that were only guaranteed for one year. So what this amendment does is just clarify that the county will not have to pay any additional fees for subrogation costs, will not have to pay any additional fees for what's called a value-based system, and it also clarifies that it was only during the first year that they had performance guarantees. So it's really nothing new, but it, we wanted to clarify the arrangement that we entered into.
Okay, that, that second part, after the subrogation, the performance what?
So performance guarantees, that, that's how they perform as far as the handling of the claims for us.
And so this is just an amendment to an existing contract, is that correct?
That's right, and it's a contract that will then take us through the calendar year of 2019.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item three is recognition and proclamation as a resolution declaring 2018 as Youth Justice Action Month and the day of October 19th as disproportionate minority contact and racial and ethnic diversion awareness and action day. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Rogers and I participated in a DMC Red Summit Disproportionate Minority Contact and Racial and Ethnic Diversity Awareness Day. We participated in that through reconnecting Clavon Stennis and the Black Studies Department at UNO put together this summit for a half a day and brought in some speakers, and it was a, a great summit. I think it geared up people again. This is a 30-year issue that I think we've basically said enough is enough, and we need to start taking action now. And so, not speaking for Commissioner Rogers, but we were happy and honored to be a part of that, and we'll be moving fast and furious to try to address that in Douglas County. So thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item four is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on a Board of Commissioners-related item not listed on the agenda? Please. Please state your name and the lights. You got five minutes. We ask you that you keep it to the issue and not personal to the dice.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Cornelius Williams. I reside on, here in Omaha. My issue is 30th Street. As a landowner, I received a letter that there is to be what is called a leaning of 30th Street, i.e. changing, cutting down the number of lanes. This would be a huge mistake, mistake to the North Omaha. This would be a huge mistake, mistake to the North Omaha area, because it would completely take away any traffic for any businesses to grow or to participate, especially on 30th Street. Currently, there...
What street to 30th are you discussing?
I'm referring to from Cummings to, the whole thing is for Cummings, no, yeah, Cummings to Ames.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Okay. Was there a question? Okay. So this is in lieu of the fact that throughout, I've been here throughout my lifetime for the most part, and I've watched from 16th Street to Florence Boulevard, 20th Street, now 24th Street, and now on 30th Street. And it's like a heart. You have a heart. In your heart, what happens when you, causes heart attacks is when your arteries clog, they less blood flow and everything like that, and hence your cells around it die. And that's basically what's gonna happen in North Omaha if you guys do this. There's no question about it. You can look at it, you look at, like I said, you look at the business that used to be on 20th Street, gone. 16th Street, gone. 24th Street, gone. I realize right now there's basically no businesses, a bunch of empty lots on 30th Street. But at the same time, you're not gonna get anybody to build if there's no traffic. It's like an action hour in a store. You look at anything, if you don't have traffic, you can't have growth. That's it.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go to presentations. Dr. Poor, I'm gonna flip you. I'm gonna flip you just because they need to, my understanding by Commissioner Craft, they need about a certain time, but it'll be quick. So we'll go to item B, the Youth Southeast Asian Leadership Initiative, Commissioner Craft.
Yes, and if I could have Val come up to the front? Oh, he is up to the front. And if I could have all the young people from the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Institute stand? Val?
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road. Once again, it is my honor to be in front of you, the Chair, and the rest of the commissioners to present the sixth YSELE delegation to visit our city. As the previous five, they are here via U.S. Department of State grant, which was received by UNO to do a five-week Leadership Institute. YSELE stands for Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. And I would just like to point out that this State Department delegation is vetted in the exact same way that another State Department delegation, excuse me, another State Department program that I work with on a regular basis is vetted the same way the International Visitors Leadership Program. They are recommended by our embassies in their 10 Southeast Asian countries as the potential future leaders of those countries. They are further vetted by the U.S. Department of State in Washington, DC, and they are here with us today. The International Visitor Leadership Program, which I mentioned earlier, which vets the same way, has produced, in terms of the alumni of that program, now over 335 individuals who have gone on to be either the president or prime minister of their country. So there is a high probability that you have standing before you today a future president, prime minister, or other top leader of one of the 10 ASEAN Southeast Asian countries. I would also like to say on a personal note how appreciative all of the YSELE delegations have been in regards to your welcoming them not only to the chamber meeting, but giving your time prior to explain the workings of Douglas County. I've been hosting international visitors for over 18 years, and it is the highlight of my international hosting career to be involved with this YSELE delegation. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing the young people here. As I gave them copies of the Open Meetings Act, that applies to every aspect of government. All of the states have open meetings laws. This is unique, this one is Nebraskas. It may vary slightly in Iowa, but the same law operates. Our state legislators, our county commissioners, our city council people, the Metropolitan Utilities District, the Electric Board, School District, they all have to abide by this law. I would love you all to study it. And as Commissioner Rogers stated, we have a copy of it posted on our north wall. So anybody who wanders in and questions our, what we're doing, is able to see it. And I don't know if any other commissioners have questions, but...
They do.
Good, I'll let them talk.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. McPherson, for bringing these young men and women to us. Welcome to Nebraska, and we hope that you enjoy your stay here. It's beautiful fall weather out there, so hopefully you get out and see some of it. We have lovely autumn here when it's not snowing. So you missed the snow a week ago, and I think you're gonna be, I don't know how long you're staying, but I think you're gonna be okay for the next few days.
This is their fourth week, and yes, they experienced the not very nice weather when they first arrived.
Well, we're always glad to have you, and I think it's one of the best things that our State Department does, to bring young leaders like you to America. And we hope that you get a good sense of how our government works. We're a work in progress, and I'm sure that many of your countries share that. As a democracy, you're never done. It's always up to the current generation to make sure that there's democracy for the next generation. And we've had pretty good success for a couple centuries now, and that's only as good as the next generation. So we're inspired by the fact that so many bright, young leaders from your countries have come here to share what we have. I am particularly struck by the number of young women in this group. As a father of three women, I'm very excited about the fact that we're hopefully reaching some gender equality in leadership roles, not only in the United States but around the world. So I won't ask for a show of hands of which of you young women are gonna be the first woman prime minister of your country, but I hope that we're looking at more than one here today. And so, thanks. It looks like there's a real good gender balance in this group, and that's a great thing going forward. We're working towards that here too. And again, it's never done. So congratulations to all of you, and again, welcome to the United States.
We have nothing here, Val is, you know, sorry, Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna give you my business cards, and if you have a Facebook or Twitter account, connect with me. I actually still connect with a couple of young people who visited over the years. So it's a good way to stay connected, and then I'll be able to tell everybody back here about what's going on with you. So I'm gonna give you these. So welcome and thank you.
And if I could, Commissioner Duda, when I first came onto the board about nine years ago, we were working on an issue, and he described it like this. Democracy is like steering a ship. You can't do a right-angle turn overnight. It takes time to make that turn. So things happen slowly, sometimes very slowly. And there's what they call the pendulum theory of politics, where leans ref sways left, then it sways right, then it sways left, then it sways right. There's always periods of adjustment. You have to learn to accept it. And unfortunately, sometimes that's hard to do. So I like the fact that you came and you're willing to help absorb our culture and hopefully disseminate it across the world. And do we have time if any one of them or two of them have a question for us?
Sure.
Great. Does anybody have a pressing, burning issue that you'd like to ask us?
Okay.
Somebody, please.
Hello, I am DM from Aggarban Village. I lived there for three weeks, so, right? So I'm DM from the Philippines, and I am a founder of a nonprofit organization in my country. So I am just curious with a pastor a while ago, since I am a son of a pastor, and we were exempted in taxes in our country. So I just wanna ask, why does he have to appeal for the exemption of tax here in your county?
Basically, per state law, there was a time period that it needed to be applied for every year. His situation was, it seems like they exchanged property, and the previous property owner had filed, he was not getting the notices. So when he took possession of the property and he got this note that he was gonna be charged, he needed to come and correct it. So that was the quickest version of it. Every year here, you have to reapply for that assessment. It doesn't, it's not just granted and kept, you have to reapply for it. For instances like there where it may change property and it may come on the tax roll, so you need to reapply every year.
Was it not like automatic on your security and exchange? Like if you are part of a sectarian group, that would be, any property that your sect has should be automatically exempted to the taxes?
Well, there's a missing board member that would like that. He advocates for that all the time. But that's a, that here would have to go through our legislature to be changed right now. They don't allow that.
And we granted his exemption. We saw that it's an innocent mistake. He wasn't trying to deceive us. You notice Commissioner Duda laughing because he abides by the letter of the law? And the letter of the law says we're not allowed to grant that exemption. We're supposed to deny it. But there are times when it's not right. You know, the law needs to be tweaked, and this is our protest against a law that needs to be tweaked. So, you know, we disagree, and we disagree with the legislature on this issue. They still have the right to deny it through what they call the Turk, correct?
No, I think this one goes to the Department of Revenue.
Oh, yes, okay.
And they'll decide, they're gonna say, but let me clarify Commissioner Craft's point. We believe in the law. There's the term, the letter of the law, and then there's the spirit of the law.
Yes, yes.
And we operate in the spirit of the law, but we believe in the law.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad he clarified that, because we do believe in the law.
If I can expound on that just a little bit, there are actually five tests to be tax-exempt in Nebraska. You cannot serve liquor, you cannot discriminate, you cannot make a profit on any of your properties. So there's a number of, just because a church owns property doesn't make it automatically exempt. If a church rents out some of their space, that becomes taxable. We've run into that situation before. And so that's why you can't just have an automatic list that everybody is exempt forever, because we have to make sure that they're following all of the qualifications and criteria to be exempt.
That clarifies, because in our country, if you are a clergy, then all of your properties are exempted to the taxes.
Nice, nice. My move of the Philippines is something.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Commissioner Craft?
Or any of us?
If not, I'm gonna ask him one, just for the heck of it. Oh, good.
Hi, good morning, everyone, I'm Juhi, I'm from Singapore. Just out of curiosity, because I understand that in Philippines, like sectarian groups and like religious groups are exempt of tax, and I think it's the same in the US where they have to apply every year. But why is this so? Why are they exempted of their taxes? Is it because they might not be able to pay it, because they might not have the necessary funding? Because I do know that certain religious institutions actually do make a lot of money in the sense of making money. So, yeah, I just want to understand why they're exempt of taxes in America.
Let the lawyer here take a shot at that.
Thank you.
Very good point, and we talk about this a lot. Commissioner Morgan has made the point over and over again that our very lucrative healthcare industry in Nebraska is by and large tax-exempt because they are supposedly not for profit. But they make a lot of money. And it comes down to a political question that they can go to the legislature and have and carve out an exemption for themselves. Get a majority of the legislature and the governor to agree, you're tax-exempt, then you're tax-exempt. So it becomes a political consideration. The religious one is based on something a little different. I mean, our constitution establishes a separation of church and state. And that was an important consideration, because when they set up this country, most governments around the world had an official religion. And that still exists in many countries. And we said that you shouldn't be required to go to any religion. You should have freedom of religion or freedom of non-religion. You should be able to think anything that you want. And so, in order to exempt them from government control, so that there's not an official religion or an unofficial religion or any preference, it was kind of determined that, well, we won't exempt them from taxation. That again, as you've heard, is subject to a test. I can't just say, I'm a religion, so I shouldn't have to pay taxes. You have to kind of prove up on that, and that's been a movable line. There have been people who have maintained that they are religions when in fact they've been determined to be profit-making organizations. And there, you know, are tests of that that are ongoing, like the one that you witnessed today. You have to apply, and, you know, you have to get renewal of your tax-exempt status. And so, in two senses, it's kind of a movable thing. But the religious one is based on freedom of thought, freedom of religion, which is central to our idea of democracy. The other one is like, well, if you can get it done, then you can get it done. And that's much more political consideration. And we talk about that all the time, because we're dependent on those revenues. And so we're jealous of that tax-exempt status. And we're not excited about making anybody tax-exempt that, you know, isn't already. So that's a very good question, and it goes to, you know, how we operate both ideologically and financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson?
I have a question in terms of in your country. So you say that once you're a 501(c)(3), you're granted the tax exemption and for all properties that are under that 501(c)(3).
You said that for the Philippines.
For the Philippines, oh, okay. Okay, and is that the same for you, or not?
Oh, no.
No?
Because in Singapore, we have a very strict definition of what a religious group is, which has to belong to one of the four main religions. Because there are a lot of, oh, sorry. There are a lot of groups that arise as cults, and it's very hard to kind of categorize them as a religious group or to really define what a religious group is, per se. So we don't have such laws back home. So that's why I was curious as to how in America you regulate this and how you define what really is a religious group and why they should be tax-exempt. Because I can see that a lot of religious groups or sectarian groups do make a lot of money and profit. So, yeah. And I guess taxes are a way to regulate them, so I'm also wondering how you regulate the profit that these groups make and how they're channeled to various sources.
Well, we had an interesting one, actually, in Commissioner Duda's district. We're elected by districts, and there was a... And there was a religious group that were buying up a lot of the homes in the area, which then they became tax exempt and they were taken off the tax roll. And the neighbors got pretty upset about that. And so there was a long conversation and discussion here at the board meeting about it. But they are reviewed every year by our assessor's office. So in the Philippines, then, if you just are granted that, do you have to go back when the 501(c)(3) ends? Or how is it regulated in the Philippines to know that what should get exempted and what shouldn't? And when does it go away?
I don't know the code that you've said, sorry.
That's okay.
But just like my parents, we aren't, they are not required to file for the income tax return, even to show their liabilities and other properties. Yeah, so that's actually a problem, not really a problem, but somewhat like a debate in our country because there's a lot of perks when you become a pastor. As long as you have the security exchange number, the SEC, so you can be exempted to taxes.
Well, thank you for sharing that. That is very interesting to see how different, and yet it's the same issue. So, thank you.
Religious freedom, religious freedom is something that's been in front of the court system, working its way up from local level to district level to federal level to the Supreme Court. And so a lot of it's determined by the Supreme Court and rightfully so. The other thing is, I don't know if you know this, you're being broadcast on a YouTube channel now. Douglas County has a YouTube channel. Douglas County Dash. You look up Douglas County, Nebraska, because there's many Douglas Counties, one in other states. Look up Douglas County, Nebraska, and you can watch our previous meetings and this meeting. So you can prove to your constituents you were here. And you can contact us through our website by any of our emails.
Commissioner Morgan.
One quick thing when you leave here with the professor. If you look out the window to the north, you'll see a large white 16-story building, 18 stories. And it's called Woodman is the name of it, an insurance company. But it's a paternal order. This board, a few years ago, denied them tax exemption. We voted. Well, they went to the legislature and were able to get the statute changed so they have tax exemption as a paternal order. So they don't pay property taxes either on that portion of the building that they occupy, which we didn't agree with most, the majority of us. So it's kind of an interesting scenario. Thanks again for being here.
And thank you for your questions.
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road. I would like to thank the chair and the commissioners for their hospitality today. Earlier, there was a conversation between Commissioners Duda and Kraft in regards to how difficult it is to get young people to go into public service. And I think the delegation found that very interesting. I just want to add to that, that we make it very difficult for anyone to go into public service, more so today than in the past. So thank you all for your service.
With that, we'll go to, back to item A, and the presentations, and Be Healthy Douglas County, Dr. Poor.
Good morning.
So some of you have received an email blast, as we call it, that kind of keeps you up to date on this website. It's kind of a blog, so to say. It's where we tell stories about things that we have, that have been going on and that we have been doing. The story that I'm going to tell you today is actually, over four years, we have received a grant from the state, Health and Human Services, to really address chronic diseases in our community. Specifically, we know that a lot of things that we find in our environment or our behavior are prerequisites, so to say. So this grant was from the Prevention Fund. You all have heard, under the ACA, there was some money set aside for the Prevention Fund. I am so pleased at you, Commissioner Rogers. I have to say, he is now documenting what physical activity is. And you will hear me talk about it. You know, the new, the sitting is the new smoking. So actually, sitting for too long, we have this policy at our Board of Health that after one hour, you stand for three minutes and it really helps. But anyway, let me go back. So this was the grant from Prevention Fund from 2014 to 2018. The grant really concluded at the end of September this year. As you know, as we all know, you always think you're gonna go straight ahead and gonna go to the goal. But usually, it isn't the case. So what did we really do under that grant proposal? Because you actually sign off on many grants that we receive. And I'm sure you are wondering, whoa, my God, how much money are we gonna, is the Health Department getting from grants? This grant really looked at a few areas. It looked at nutrition, physical activity, and clinical connection. And one of the main things that we did under nutrition was really look at our vending machines. We are able to establish now that we have what we call healthy vending. Looking at you, a member of the wellness team. And the wellness team of Douglas County was really instrumental in this. We have now 13 county government buildings where all of you can go to the vending machines. And you can distinguish between items that are healthy and just those that we are all used to see in the vending machines. It doesn't mean that everything in the vending machine is healthy. And healthy has a special criteria, has to have more than, less than 200 calories, 35% only can be from fat, 35% can only be from sugar. So really, even myself, I'm thinking, well, let's go and try these. So we have 30 county government buildings without the civic center. We don't have the civic center as one of them.
By the way.
We were just talking about that.
Because we have a different vendor at the civic center.
It's only his fault. It's not the vendor's fault.
He said, no. We have a health system, Charles True Health Center, who also has healthy vending, and UNMC, who have healthy vending. These are things that are continuing now as we talk. Then we have healthy neighborhood stores. And you have talked, have heard me talk about healthy neighborhood stores. But really, it's amazing what we have done. We have decreased the health food, the food environment that has been fragile. Or you sometimes hear them called food deserts. We have hardly any food deserts in Douglas County because we have tried to talk to these small neighborhoods that just were selling alcohol, tobacco products, had their windows covered. We told them, you know, nobody's gonna come in and buy healthy food. They are all thinking, what's going on in that little store? Now, these stores have really, instead of just having the cartons with their food out there, they have made it appealing. So that when I go into the store, I was in a store the other day. I thought, how appealing is this? How do you want to take a banana with you for lunch or on the way home, or you haven't eaten yet? So as a total, we have 14 healthy neighborhood stores now in Douglas County, mainly in our areas, in our minority areas. We have one actually in Bennington, too. That's the 15th store. 27,000 customers have been reached with nutrition education. Because what we are finding out, you can have avocados and fancy vegetables. If people do not know how to prepare food with those, they are never gonna buy it. So it has to look fresh, you have to know what you can do with it, and it has to be affordable. The next area that we are trying to focus was on physical activity. Physical activity in the workplace and physical activity in the community. What do we really need to do to make the environment more appealing? We have 25 organizations in this community now who have, together with the Worldist Group and with the Wellness Council of the Midland, who have put policies in place. Our board has put policies in place for the Health Department. For example, we have healthy parking. You have a parking sign that is a little bit further away, so you have to walk to it. But think about all the steps that you are already taking. We have this policy that after one hour, you can really get up for three minutes and stretch yourself, probably go to the copy machine, make some copies, or go to the restrooms. We have walking meetings. They are a little bit more difficult. I have tried them out and I see. Feel free to stand up when I'm presenting. And we have installed bike racks because you don't want to bike to work if you don't have a bike rack to put your bikes on. So I am very proud and very happy every day when I see bikes in our bike racks. But these are policies that businesses want to do because the millennial, they want activities. They want us to have a Google-type of environment. Actually, my staff asked yesterday, why can't we be a Google-like environment? And I said, then, so you mean you want to sit all on round bars and work like that? I don't think that's gonna go. But we have tried to see, what do we need to do really in our community? So we have addressed policies. What you have heard this morning actually goes into the policy of complete streets. A complete street is a street where you can be car-centric, meaning you can drive your car, but you also can drive your bicycle. You also can drive your carriage, your baby carriage, or so on. What they are trying to do on 30th Street is trying to do a road diet. To see, it's similar thing that they have done on 24, South 24th Street. And when you drive down that street, you are gonna be driving slower, less traffic accidents. And you are gonna look, what businesses are there on the right side and on the left side? And the bikes are, the bikers are gonna feel comfortable going there. We have done a regional bicycle and pedestrian plan. We've done a neighborhood campaign. And that was in the Midwest, in the midtown area. It was called Midtown on the Move. And what we found is that you don't need to switch from driving your car, not anymore. But how about switching it one day? How about switching it one day a month? And what we have found is that there were lots of individuals interested in it. About 9,000 trips were not done in their cars. So we use this kind of as a pilot, to see what appeals to the public. We have, under the mayor's leadership, we have a coalition of partners formed to achieve Vision Zero. What Vision Zero means is, it's an environment, transportation, that doesn't have any accidents in a year. And we have a transportation equity plan created. So that is what physical activity in the community we have achieved. National Diabetes Prevention Program, I think you all have heard, we are not different than anyplace else in the United States where we are seeing our diabetes rates rise. And what do we need to do to prevent this from going any further? We have distributed, under this grant, about 20,000 prediabetes awareness efforts. We have done over, we have made sure that over 3,000 community members were connected with healthy neighborhood stores, big clinics, food pantries, and so on, to really start to address their diets. And we have One World, as well as Nebraska Methodist Community Clinic, down, which is at Coons Memorial Hospital, that we are partnering with for referrals from the Health Department. They have diabetes programs at those two locations. We have, at this time, eight work sites that are trying to implement the prediabetes program. So this prediabetes assessment, we have done about, potentially around 1,300 assessments. It's a very short assessment. It has about five questions in it. And the way it is being done, our staff has done it, usually in the neighborhood stores when you have a food demonstration. See, would you like to take this assessment? Yeah, why not? From these 1,300 assessments, how many of them would you think that have been positive? For prediabetes? 400 of them. 90% of them had no idea that they were prediabetic. This is, it's very similar to the national standard. 30% of the population is prediabetic. And I tell you, if you talk to somebody who has diabetic outcome or symptoms at this time, you tell them, you ask them, and you say, if you would have known that you are prediabetic, would you have changed your behavior so that potentially you wouldn't end up to be diabetic? I usually say, I usually hear, yes, we would, we would have changed it. So what we are trying to do is trying to prevent anybody from being diabetic. We have worked with five clinics. And you say, well, why are you working with these, with clinics? I think we know that there are smaller clinics in our community that A, do not have the technical expertise, B, don't see really the need, that they need to change their business or that they could improve their business, if not somebody really holds their hand to lead them there. And from those, we have done a lot of work with, especially SOMA, the South Omaha Medical Association. It's a small clinic. They didn't really have electronic medical records because they are a husband and wife clinic. And they felt, you know, what we have done so far has worked. But the electronic medical record that we have implemented with them has helped them, has really helped them track their patient, do better patient satisfying events, and so on. So this is really working with the clinic one-to-one. What quality assurance do you need to put in place? And we have done, worked a lot around what we call clinician extenders. You say, oh, my God, that's another fancy word. But if you think about, what have our pharmacists used to do? You used to go to the pharmacist and you used to be able to talk to him about, you know, what is your recommendation on this and that? And at this time, I honestly feel, I feel a pharmacist is like a retailer. He gives you something and that's it. We have tried to start to say, and we have heard this from pharmacists, we can do more. We can do more. We can do more for the patient so they don't need to see their physician all the time. So we really have worked with the Florence Pharmacy, for example, to see what would it take to do a blood pressure self-monitoring program? Instead of individuals having to go to the physician to take the blood pressure, in between physician visits, could they come to the pharmacy? Could you take their blood pressure and give them advice of where they are or where they need to go? There are some neat stories on the website of a guy who went once a month to the emergency room because his blood pressure went through the roof. Since we have this program installed, he goes to the pharmacy, gets his blood pressure checked. He knows when it's up and when it's down. And I think that self-monitoring is really the way to go. We don't need everybody to go to the emergency room for unneeded visits. We are now hoping that nine additional locations are gonna be trained in this. And lastly, I want to talk about this a little bit, the community health worker model. And lastly, I want to talk about this a little bit, the community health worker model. We all know, and I think have known for a long time, healthcare is doing a fabulous thing, especially in our community, we all should be very proud of. But there is more than just you have high blood pressure. Why do you have high blood pressure? Do you have a refrigerator that is full with healthy food? Do you have transportation to come to your clinic? How does your housing look like? Those are what we call the social determinants of health. And for many people, the social determinants of health affect their health. But you know, the world that we live in, how can we now ask that the physician should take his time to say, and what's going on in your life? Where are you coming from? Why do you have these type of symptoms? No, we need to have a connector. And that connector can actually be the community health worker. And the community health worker is usually somebody from the community who just knows and has an interest in forwarding health in their community. So what we are trying to do is, this is not a degree, this is not a nurse, this is really somebody who says, if you need some resources, if you need, for example, to know where your next meal comes from, let me help you. Let me share with you what the resources are in this community. So we brought about 30 organizations together, healthcare systems, but also social organization, also community organization, and said, what would it need to bring that connection? So that health with the community. And a lot of individuals were saying, you know, the community health worker would fill that role. Sometimes they are called Pomeratoris, but we didn't have a program in this community. So we established a foundational course and now a supervisor training under this. Let me see. So a lot of things have been, and I wanted to show you a little video that really explains how we have become a healthy community, a healthier community. We still have a long ways to go. But some of what you have heard from me today- Say to the community as a whole, if you have stories, we want to know about it. We need to hear about the good things that are going on because they may lead us to further good things. So any questions that you have? Thank you for letting me present to you.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. I eat out periodically, and usually, even when you go in a restaurant, it doesn't tell you the salt nutrition content. One of the national restaurants I eat out at, I was going to go to that an evening. And I try to eat locally when I can. But I looked at their menu online, and what I wanted to order had 150% of the daily salt recommendation. The least amount I could find on the menu for one meal was 55% of the recommended salt. Whenever I go out, I order no salt on my fries, and I'm finding more and more restaurants, fortunately, are providing that automatically. And I ask them not to salt my hamburger or whatever else I might be eating. So how do we convince the restaurants, especially the national change, to decrease their salt content? Are we working on that locally?
So a lot of national conversation going on on that? And how you talk about that is with your pocketbook? Not going to those places and telling them that they really need to be lower salt.
Because I am salt-sensitive, as many of us are, but most people don't realize it when they are.
Yep.
The next is, I was talking with a friend last Saturday, and he mentioned that he was at one of the large department stores in Omaha, and he had a tour by the nutritionist. And I'm sure more than one grocery store in there does this. But the nutritionist spent an hour with him, showing him not only how to read labels, but compare labels. For example, the low-fat had higher salt, et cetera. And she was able to advise him, she spent a full hour with him, which I was pretty impressed with. And he was very impressed, and he's changing his eating habits because of it. Am I correct in assuming that most of the major grocery stores do this?
Most of the major grocery stores have nutritions. Now, the question is, are they providing education on label reading? That's, you know, that's always an issue. But label reading is not easy, and-
I'd like to mention their name to give them a shout-out, but I'm not going to. Because I don't know that it's appropriate. Okay.
Commissioner Morgan.
Just want to thank you for the work your department does and all your people. Wednesday, we have flu shots here. Are you working to encourage all of us and others to get the flu shots tomorrow? I think it's tomorrow morning, 8 till noon, I believe.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yep, you are correct. And yes, we are encouraging everybody to get the flu shot. Especially this year, there are two new ingredients in the flu shot. So they are different from last year. So you have no immunity against those, besides if you are going to get the shot. Once you get the flu shot, it takes about two weeks for your immunity to build up. So you really should get it. You know, every year, we still hear, well, I got the flu shot, and I still got the flu. But you could have been much worse off if you wouldn't have gotten the flu shot. So severity, longevity, how long it may take is going to be shortened by you having the flu shot.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank you. When I saw this video, it was like, yes, this is the stuff that we should be showing and then putting, you know, sharing on our social media sites. This is very, very, very good work and important work, and we can spread it across the entire Douglas County population. So thank you for showing us-
Thank you for inviting me.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. With that, we'll go to public hearings. Item A, Class C-122718 License for Beer, Wine, and Distilled Spirits, on and off sale for MMMK Enterprise LLC Doing Businesses Ryan Foods and Spirits, 12221 Mary Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68142. And the manager application for Maurice D. Mashick. We'll now open the public hearing on item A. Is anybody here on that item? Seeing nobody here, we will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borgson, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I actually was just there this past weekend, and it's excellent food, new owner. You can get a real good meal in a nice environment, so encourage you all to go. Yeah, good advertising. It just so happened, it was like, oh, my God, it's coming up.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Letter B, zoning regulation text change by the Douglas County Environmental Services. This item is from last week. The public hearing is still open. Doug.
Thank you, Commissioners Doug Cook, your Douglas County Planner. Give me a second here. There we go. Thank you. So this first item is a text change. So in other words, we're adding some words to our zoning regulations. And you all remember the public hearings we had on the drive-in a few months ago, maybe a year ago. So that was processed through the zoning regs under a use called commercial recreation, high impact. And those are typical uses that are outdoors. You can see by the screen, they will have effects on lighting, noise, and traffic. And all those applied on the drive-in, we addressed all those issues. Other land uses would be shooting ranges, like a golf driving ranges, golf cart tracks, amusement parks, great racetracks. All those type uses are considered commercial recreation, high impact. In the agricultural district, they are allowed only with a special use, and rightly so. You want the planning commission's comments, we want the board's comments, and we definitely want the public to be notified in their comments. The other type of commercial recreation is called commercial recreation controlled impact. This is a use that would typically be indoors, or if it was outdoors, would have very limited outdoor effects. And you see the different uses there, a bowling rink, game arcades, which I didn't know that that was a term anymore, indoor skating rinks, and theaters. Recently, the department has had a number of inquiries regarding the use of a wedding venue in the agricultural district. And we've had to tell people that would fit under controlled impact, except our zoning regs do not allow controlled impact in the agricultural district. It only, to staff, it only makes sense that if a high-intensity use is a special use, then controlled impact should either be a permitted use or a special use. Staff recommendation feels, the commission's input, the board's input, and the public's input is all important. So staff recommendation is to add commercial recreation controlled impact as a special use in the agricultural district. And that is the request. The planning commission reviewed this and recommends approval, and asks that you concur with their recommendation.
We want to comment on this item. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borgson, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item C, rezoning request application for Lake Ariel Investments LLC, Bernice E. Grucock. This is a public hearing continuation that was open last week. It is still open. Doug.
Okay, so Lake Arrow is way out west and in, obviously, the county's jurisdiction. It's a platted subdivision. So earlier this year, the applicant came to us requesting the consolidation of 19, roughly, one-acre lots into one large 21-acre lot, which you see there on your screen, this candy cane-looking property. So the Gruccocks live in the house, kind of highlighted in yellow there. And so then, this one lot loops around the lake. Because of that combination, then, and because it's over 20 acres, it could be rezoned agricultural because our agricultural district, only the minimum lot size is 20. So their request is to rezone from RR2, which is what those 19 lots were, back to Ag. And there were a number of questions raised at the last meeting. The applicant's attorney is here, and My Good Willie is here, so I would shut up and sit down.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Ackley, I'm at the Colley Justin Law Firm, 1125 South 103rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124, here on behalf of Bernice Grucock and Lake Arrow.
With apologies, I missed your name, sir.
Tom Ackley.
Thank you.
And again, in follow-up, appreciate the work from Doug Cook on this. The land that was combined to create the 20-acre parcel, that's actually consistent with the south side of the lake as well. And I don't know, Doug, would you have the aerial that shows the other zoning? Yeah. So what's highlighted in blue is what is being requested to change to Ag. And if you look at the south side of the lake, that's already Ag, and there's also one homestead there. The Gruccocks' goal is to maintain this as just lakeshore and natural conservation land. That's the reason for doing it. I know there were some questions at the last board meeting with regard to whether this was a tax play of some sort. And I've asked Mr. Goodwilly if he would stay with us today so he could better explain that. I think he talked with Mr. Duda on that already, and I know Mr. Boyle's not here. But again, regardless of whether this is owned Ag or whether it's rural residential, the things they will look at for tax purposes, you know, the improvement, the one house that's on there is not going to change, the same improvement will be there. And because the platte has already been done, and it's not the platte that's before you, it is simply one lot currently. And whether it's one lot as rural residential or one lot as Ag, it is the same. We have no intent to have some kind of special use. We're not going to go plant soybeans out there or do something spectacular to try to get any kind of egg break on the taxes that way. It's simply to maintain the shoreline and conservation and hopefully maintain some green space in Douglas County for the future going forward. So with that, I'd entertain any questions.
Commissioner Duda.
Mr. Ackley, thank you so much for coming down, but I'm still scratching my head.
Sure.
Why are they doing this? What is the benefit? I mean, I'm sorry that I started off being a little suspicious, and I've gotten over the suspicions. I get that there's nothing going on behind the scenes tax-wise on this, has no impact on the tax status of the property. They already own it. They completely control it, if they own it.
Correct.
Why do they need this change? I'm missing the impetus.
Again, whether it's a need for change, as the owners, they believe that it's Ag. It matches up with the lake. The lake is completely green, as you'd see, all of this would just be part of the Ag. And you'd be limited to the rural residential then on the north and the east side. If you look at the other lakes around it, again, the lake to the south, there's one residence on there. That entire lake and all the land around it is considered Ag. The practical effect will be the same either way. But again, it's their way of saying, we plan to maintain this as natural conservation land going forward, which was the goal of not only combining all of the lots, but now going to Ag. And it's a family that, again, unless they change their mind in the future generation, I suspect it will stay that way for generations to come. They have done that elsewhere, and that is their intent here as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I was going to ask two things. One, I believe they've lived there a long time? How long? Roughly? Okay. And Doug, your planning board recommended going ahead with this?
Yes.
Then my thought is to be supportive of the idea and what you said about not putting it into Ag land, just that's what they want to do, to be protective of that coast, kind of, or lake.
Correct.
I think it makes sense, but we'll wait till the hearing's over.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from Mr. Goodwilly relative to the tax consequences on this. I mean, I understand what you're saying in terms of preserving it from an environmental point of view, and that's good.
And that's why I asked Mr. Goodwilly if he would be here, because I know as an applicant, you're not going to trust me as much as what Mr. Goodwilly will say.
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. Mr. Ackley, I wouldn't be so sure about that. If past practice is any indication. My understanding of the question walking into this late is, would a change from rural residential zoning to agricultural zoning somehow have some property value implications? Most notably, would it suddenly make the remaining unimproved 19 or 20 acres, whatever it is, eligible for special valuation? The short answer to that is, if it's not- The short answer to that is if it's not, if that property is not in the incorporated limits of a city, village, town, or SID, it's already eligible for special valuation. With respect to the zoning question, normally our appraisers don't care much. Our job is to value what's on the property and how it's being used. The zoning is kind of an ancillary factor. We aren't the zoning police. So if somebody, if Commissioner Kraft decides to put a rendering plant on his residential lot, we're going to value it as a rendering plant, whether or not it's zoned appropriately or not. We think the zoning is kind of between the property owner, his conscience, and the zoning enforcement authorities. But we value what's there. So merely changing the zoning from rural res to agricultural is not really going to have a valuation implication unless the people that own the property change the use in some fashion.
Okay, so I guess that gets to it, because we've had this green belt conversation before. So you're saying change the use by actually doing agricultural activities?
There are two tests for special valuation. First, is it within the boundaries of a town, city, village, or SID? And second, is the property primarily used for agricultural purposes? If you have both those things, then the property can qualify. So in this situation, my understanding is the property is not within the limits of, or is it? It's not within the limits of a town or city or SID. So then the next question would be, is there agricultural, are those vacant acres being used primarily for agricultural activities? And just sitting in the gallery, listening, it doesn't sound like they've taken any steps to do that.
Okay. Then I guess, and this is just out of curiosity, what protection do you get as a landowner for the property to be preserved in its natural state by this change in status?
Two things. If anyone came forward in the future, they would have to do not only a plat with you, with your approval, they would also have to get a rezoning change. Again, as it currently stands with the one residential structure on the house, whether it remains Ag, whether it goes to Ag or stays rural residential, you can only have the one house on the property. That's going to be true unless they ever do a replat. So again, it's maybe a two-step process for somebody going forward. And if the family at some point in the future would change their mind, obviously, they've now created a higher burden for themselves. They have to get not only a rezoning, but a replat done.
And this lake community is not an SID?
Not an SID, sir, no.
So it's just unincorporated property?
So no impact in terms of taxes on bonds or anything like that. I believe it was Don Rogert that developed it many years ago. Don still lives on some of the acreage on the west side. Mr. Grucock, at some point, bought most of the lots, became the declarant. There's rights within the declaration that write a first refusal on other lots as they become available, and he's exercised that over time. And again, his goal is, I want this to be more of a natural green space conservation. And these lots, as they ring the lake, it's purely lakeshore. You're not going to see soybean fields or cornfields growing up there anytime soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Why doesn't he just put covenants on it if he wants it to remain green space? Wouldn't that have been easier to do since he owns the land?
Again, covenants could be done for green space going forward, but from a zoning perspective, the lake is Ag.
Or have it declared a conservation area?
Well, that's a whole different step under the tax law and other areas.
I see Mr. Goodwilly making faces. Okay. On the rest of the lake, are there houses on those lots? How many of those lots are occupied?
I believe there's eight lots that are occupied. You can see on the north side of the lake, the east side of the lake, those are platted for construction, but nothing's been constructed. Again, I believe it's eight to 10 homes on the lake. They've been there quite a while. No new construction has occurred in quite a while on the lake. There is one new construction occurred west of the lake a couple of years ago.
Because I just see it kind of, I'm kind of leery and suspect of it. By the way, do you plan to put a rendering plant there?
No rendering plant will go there, sir, no.
Mr. Goodwee, how did you know my neighbors objected to a rendering plant? I'm curious. Never mind.
Just a wild guess.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just don't feel comfortable with it for some reason. I can't explain it. I just don't.
Okay. Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I actually think it's fantastic, because we see constantly across the county that we're losing our green space. And be able to conserve some of this is great, I think. Again, I don't think that there's anything suspect or mischievous or whatever word you want to use in doing this. But again, owns the property, wants to conserve it as that, and I think that's a very, very good thing for Douglas County.
Okay, no further questions here?
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kraft voting no. All other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, committee discussion in action. Letter A is the finance committee. Number one is the budget report. Commissioner Morgan?
As presented, unless Joe has something he wants to add.
Item, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. The Administrative Services Committee held a hearing on Thursday, the 18th, where the mayor and the fire department joined us in the operational rollout of the Fire Alert System, which successfully completes the first phase of the Public Safety Bond. It was quite a demonstration. They had all the bells and whistles there, and we were real happy to see it come online on time and on budget. We look forward to interfacing with our 911 system as soon as that's complete at 156th and Maple. We will also be holding a hearing tentatively scheduled for November 12th at 7:00 PM in this chamber relative to the Juvenile Justice Center proposal, which we understand from Mr. Lorenz, will be presented to us in some form by HGR at our October 30th board meeting, where hopefully we'll finally get some numbers.
With that, item C, Child New Services, those minutes are noted for the record. Item G, Human Resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil services that is as submitted. There are no legislative items, and we do have need for an executive session for the purpose of negotiation, personnel, and litigation. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Kraft. And that is for the purposes of negotiation, personnel, and litigation. Please vote.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boyle has joined us, and motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
And again, we're going to executive session for negotiation, personnel, and litigation.
...and then let's talk later. They just... All right, you need me, I'm gonna be around, okay?
Motion to reconvene and adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Motion Michael Mr. Morgan, second. Michael Mr. Borgson, please vote.
One moment, please.
Yes.
Just got up.
All right, motion passes.
Twelve fifteen.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you a yes? Okay, motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.
I'll go have a little, I got some left, Bill.